Order the joint meeting between Delaware City's School Board and Delaware City Council. Thank you all for being here. We'll do a roll call against schools already done there, so if you want to go to one for City Council.
Mr. Jones, Mrs. Keller.
Yeah.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Regal.
Yeah. And item two on the agenda is 2018 development update by Dave Upman. He's a community.
I'm Mayor, I'm City Council, School Board. Appreciate everybody being here on what's turned out to be a rainy night tonight. I see out there a couple. I will have a brief development update for you and then typically like to ask some questions there often and I believe Paul has an update after that. The first slide is really just a introductory slide showing some of our construction. One of our comprehensive plan Delaware City meetings that was hosted at Congress School, so we appreciate the partnership with the schools on that. It was a great meeting. I think we're in the gym there. And then one of our hallmark cases in our facade program, the hamburger and the transformation that was that we were able to achieve from the left to the right and what we see today. Sometimes it's good to just step back and remember where we started and where we are with programs like that as well. And then lastly, in the right-hand corner, we did put in for an award of American Planning Association Ohio Chapter this year for the inaugural Great Places in Ohio and our downtown Delaware was selected and designated as a great place in Ohio in the inaugural year of that award. There were only three other places in the state, so we're, of course, we think we deserve that, but we're very proud of that as well. So we got some recognition from our peer communities in addition. Jumping right into the numbers as we always do, first just to remind us that we work very closely with Paul and your staff on all kinds of development discussions and development updates and that happens really on a regular basis, including our own. Projects, of course, but we also work with your consultants at least once a year as we do with the Old Tangi School District. You, most school districts are very diligent about making sure that you have your numbers and development pipeline up to date and you can do projections as best you can. What none of us can really know is sometimes the pace and the timing of this development. And I will tell you on behalf of my staff and fire staff, police staff, bill staff, policy staff, but particularly frontline staff, the, we knew 2018 was going to be a big year. We did not know how big a year and about mid-year, the tidal wave kind of crashed over all of us who were trying to handle this growth in development in the cities where the market was really producing, which is, by the way, a high-quality problem to have. This is a good thing, that people are finding our community and our schools desirable in all respects in our downtown. That's part of that as well. However, some of the numbers and you can see on the graphs, literally you can see kind of the tidal wave in just graph, graphic form. 2018 actually represented the highest residential permitting year on record. That kind of tidal wave is what we're talking about. 623 new residential permits, 364 new single-family permits, which was second-highest ever. 259 non-single-family permits, which was second-highest ever. Seven straight year, over 200 new commercial permits as well, reflective of a growing community and commercial coming in to provide goods and services and restaurants and all kinds of jobs for that growing population and really right through the recession that occurred with commercial permits. So very, very lucky and reflective of a high-quality community. And again, our downtown facade grant program, which we're very proud of, and I know Diane has gone through, spends many, many hours on my staff along with Jerry Warner, my building official, our building official. They spend hours on that program with our building owners and our business owners and they do a fantastic job. Thirty-some-odd projects at this point in the life of the program and in 2019, we're set to go over $1 million of combined public and private investment in our downtown. So that's, that's a pretty special number, I think, and is reflective out there in the real world. So needless to say, a big, big year. We anticipate a big year in 2019 as well. However, again, the timing and the pace and talking to different developers, looking at some of the macro forces, it's, it's hard to anticipate record-setting year 2019, but kind of you almost take it a day or a week at a time anymore in this business. But I think all city staff really stepped up and handled that in addition to doing some major, major planning work in multiple departments and other capital improvement work in other departments while this was all going on. It's also worth noting that this is basically working our way through a known existing pipeline of development and isn't really reflective of major annexations. We had a few, but they were like the Camp Lazarus, so not a, not a development site per se. And we've had a few, we have had a few more calls already this year about potential annexations. But this is really reflective of working through the pipeline that we've talked about and I briefed you on for any number of years now. We just sort of got a lot of it last year. So in terms of population, we estimate at the end of 2018 that our city population, based on building permits, so a little bit of a leading indicator, although that's down about three months from permit to build the house and occupy it, it's about that short, even in this weather, believe it or not. We estimate the population to be over 41,000 for the city now. That's more than doubled since 1990. And again, cities hit a, hit a moment where the pace can significantly pick up on growth and development and that may be also some of what we're seeing as well in terms of cities that are, that are desirable and growing and have good schools. So that's foundational to growth and development. But that's about, almost a 19% growth since the 2010 census and as you go out into downtown and share First Fridays, you can greet about 6,500 new Delaware citizens, friends and neighbors, which is good as well. But you could see the, you can see the growth by years there, obviously the 2018 pie chart jumps, jumps out at you, pie wedge jumps out at you. And we will know more and have better data as we get into the 2020 census and the planning for that has started if you, if you keep up on that sort of thing as well.
David, what jumped out at us on that second half of the year was the how active the east side got. Was that something you saw as well?
Frankly, Paul, we saw it everywhere.
Is that right?
We saw it everywhere, west side, southeast. East side had a lot of pre-development activities, some controversial, we also in our City Council Planning Commission in particular handled a number of controversial cases last year, which is for us kind of pre-development, those cases often then turn into subdivisions or apartment complexes, eventually building permits. Most of them fall through to that. And so we saw it literally southeast, west and east side. Yeah. Most of the permits last year, we did take a little time today to break them down by school district because we're a city of two school districts and Paul usually asks, I want to be prepared. About, about three-quarters of the permits last year were in Delaware City School District and about a quarter, a little over quarter were in Old and Tangi. That changes depending upon the year, depending upon which subdivision or development is just rolling at the time.
Yeah, when Cheshire Road, Road was really exploding out there, that number went up.
Yeah. Yeah. Correct.
That went to Old and Tangi, but.
Yep, exactly.
We've caught up again.
Yep, yep. And again, we're just, we're kind of working through the known pipeline here, as you know. I know you know. So we have some future look for you, continued residential development across all those same geographies that we talked about, continuing to build out that pipeline. We have a conversation started really and we're discussing a lot of things about residential development. One of those things is work, the need for workforce housing, the need to be able to have housing that is affordable to workforce, but also to house our workforce here in the city and put them to work here in the city rather than have them go to other, to Columbus or to other suburban locations forward. So that's a longer-term kind of goal and a conversation we're just having more. And we're not the only community having that conversation. That's a, that's kind of a national conversation about affordability and those sorts of things going on now. One of the developments you see on the right side of the screen is, is now known as, was known as Terra Alta, now it's Terra Alta because it's the old Terra Alta, the Rogers piece and the Stockdale piece, if you recall, those, those developments are all Terra Alta now. Just for those of you playing the home game, I'll have a little cheat sheet for you on how the names change on these. But the dashed line, above the dashed line is the original Terra Alta and that's the piece that's within the Delaware City School District. That's really a vision that's move-up housing, if you will, in the Delaware City School District. But still providing a variety of housing types in a large development from single-family to some condominiums and that sort of thing. And of course, the market has changed since well over 15 years ago when they started this particular development and they're making some changes to be reflective of that as well. Below the line is in the Old Tangi District, so it would represent really our first significant, first of all, that's a major development on the scale of the communities of Glen Ross on the southeast side, which heretofore has been our largest single development. Second of all, it's really our first development that will be cohesively designed, but will cut across the school districts in this kind of way. So that's kind of interesting. The first phase of Terra Alta has been approved and the first model home, I believe, is under construction out there.
I'm sure.
They're going through some other processes the City Council knows in terms of new community authorities to even make this a more enhanced community with recreational amenities and those sorts of things as well. We have continued commercial, industrial and really innovation development throughout our downtown. We just talked about the Innovation Center, Cohatch. There's other, many other business and restaurant nightlife and entertainment developments that I think we all are familiar with. The southwest, the Sanmo Parkway area is obviously a key focus for us and to continue to try to attract and retain businesses and workforce there. We're talking about some airport development, redevelopment and our municipal airport is kind of in the same area and enhances what's going on here. And then quite literally, as of a call last week, all of the shopping centers, existing shopping centers in the city are moving to enhance their tenants, attract new tenants and even continue to grow and develop like when we called shopping center and at least what everybody here in City Council and City Staff thought was a great thing, Raising Cane's coming to a shopping center near you in 2019 out there. So that's a restaurant that seems like everybody loves. I do too. There's a couple of other big planning efforts I just wanted to highlight and I know you're aware of them, but thank you for your partnership and your involvement in these two efforts and look forward to continuing those conversations with you as both of these things have impact across both school districts and of course, the city Delaware Together Building Off Tradition Planning for Tomorrow's our comprehensive plan process. We spent a lot of time in that with a 30-plus person steering committee last year and we will again this year and hopefully be able to utilize some of your facilities again, but also more importantly, get your ideas put into that process whenever you see those opportunities, be they online or in person. And Access Delaware, really this is our community conversation about transportation throughout the city, which affects us all in many, many ways. So that's the update I have.
Questions?
Hey, do you want to maybe mention Coglin's Crossing? I'm sure there's some questions about that.
Coglin's Cross, what would you like to mention about that?
With the stacks.
So Coglin's Crossing is the 80-acre mixed-use development kind of just across the river from the Terra Alta here development. Backbone infrastructure has been going in over the course of 2018 and will complete through 2019 and if they can ever get a weather break. That involves O-God and of course accessing US 23, putting some new signals in, reworking them, that sort of thing. We do have the first tenants come through, Sky Car Wash for an outlot there as well through City Council, so, but that infrastructure needs to be put in place and they can really market it in earnest and I think we're going to see quite a lot of interest there. I'm encouraging the developer to maintain their focus on a, on a mixed-use development there that really will be able to be the most sustainable rather than a single 200, in this case 80-acre shopping center, as you're saying in central Ohio and lots of places if you drive around. Some of the standalone shopping centers are integrating some more residential for some, for some onsite clientele, if you will, people that live there with the shopping center and nightlife and entertainment and that sort of thing. And it's just a more sustainable model overall of development long-term, we believe, and there's a lot of information to suggest that, so that's the deep case. We're excited to see that start to come to fruition on that piece of property as well. It's been a long time, they would tell you it's been longer than they wanted in construction, but that's a major, major construction.
Any other questions? Paul, you have an update now for you?
Yeah. Well, thank you for hosting us. Always great when we, we get together. Want to do just a few updated items about the school district. It's been a real great year of just kind of seeing growth in a variety of ways. One of the things we were most excited about was US News World Report came out with the ranking of top high schools in the U.S. and Hays is now in the top 8% of high schools in the United States and in Ohio. There's, there's, the most long-running relationship in education is your performance matches your demographics. We are not in the top 8% demographically in terms of free reduced lunch percentage, all those kind of things. We're closer to 20% than we are 10%. For our high school to be, to be performing that top 8% is a testament to the work of that staff, of the staff that gets those kids ready and the school board in terms of, of their commitment to having an enriched program up there at that high school. Dempsey Middle School, you know, middle school's the scariest place to send your kid. Dempsey is in the top 3% in the state in terms of growth for its student bodies over the last three years. I mean, it's absolutely amazing. Year after year, every subgroup that you measure is, is above the state average in terms of growth at Dempsey Middle School. So they're, that, getting that momentum forward for the third straight year puts in a, in a small group of only 3% of schools in the state. That's true of our students overall in terms of their growth as measured by state testing. Our gifted, our special education subgroups and our overall student body groups were well above the student, or the state average. That's seven of the last eight years that that's been true. The only year it wasn't was when we switched from paper test to computer test. Every other year, we've been way ahead of the state in terms of expected growth. Hayes High School went through an extended process of planning and improvement with the Blue River Schools of Excellent Group and received a Lighthouse School designation as only one step to a continuous improvement process that they've committed to. Actually, we had the highest graduation rate in the history of Hayes. A lot of that's the work of Hayes, a lot of that's the work of our Will program coming fully online, but mainly just a commitment by Aaron Cook and Heidi Kegley and Angie McWeny and so many other members of the team that we're not leaving any kid behind. It was amazing to watch. An amazing array of awards, an areas of band, orchestra choir at the state level competition, the Governor's Arts Recognition Program, second place towards Voices Democracy. I tried to list this and I was told I had to keep this short, but it, the list was continuing as we went through in terms of the things that our kids have achieved. Expansion of our partnership with Strangling Families, including, you know, or with the initiative, United Way's Initiative of Strangling Families, including more and more programming every day, a partnership with the library on a maker space that's, that's coming to fruition here in the spring. It's just Willis, we made a commitment to the community on the last bond that we would make sure that Willis was an important part of what we do in this community and that's coming true every day. Our preschool at Woodward received a five-star step-up to quality rate, the highest that you can get and for our first time through that, that's amazing. Same thing you're saying, our yield rate, if you've got 41,000 residents, we've got, you know, about 6,000 kids, so that's a yield rate of about .15. So about 15% of our overall population ends up in K through 12 and, you know, as we grow again for another decade, we're going to see that. You can see that one of these is a, is a projection that you have, oops, not where it is, there we go. We grew about 400 kids from 1990 to 2000, about 800 kids from 2000 to 2010. We're growing right around 1,000 kids from 2010 to 2020 and then we only have projections through 2028 and it's about 500 kids in that eight-year period. And that matches about what we're seeing. We were seeing a growth rate of about 100 kids a year. We think we're going to see about 70 kids a year in this next decade. At the end of that decade, it drops to about 30 kids a year. So we, we start to see it, the curves flatten out a little bit as we get to that 28, 2028, 2029 on our projections. Of course, all that comes down to how many housing permits state keeps issuing. Our spending, we've continued to do everything we can to make sure we're as affordable as we can. This is 16, 17 spending, literally this afternoon as I was grading for something, I realized the state had released everybody's numbers for that. I didn't have a chance to update this slide, although I'm such a dating geek, I jumped in. We're about up about 4% in the 6th, 7018 school year, the state's up about 4%. Didn't change the overall numbers of what you see in terms of us being the second lowest spending per pupil in central Ohio amongst those districts. And every district in Delaware County being below the state average, which is a pretty amazing phenomenon. But really, our kids are our story. We can do all the data, but it really comes down to, you know, the Dempsey kids who are growing food that's being served right there in the cafeteria. Our Will kids, 25 kids, seniors last year, who were selected for that program because we weren't sure they were going to graduate. 23 of those 25 graduated. Absolutely amazing. You know, we're going to project-based learning. You see the Penguins down there from Schultz Elementary School who came forward to the board with proposal for an idling policy for those parents who get their 35 minutes before the end of school to get the line for their kids. We have idling policy for our bus. They're, they're encouraging the board to do an idling policy for our visitors who, and if you know any of our schools in the morning or afternoon, especially I mean, you'll have people waiting forever out there. Those kids took that on, so it's just, it really needs stuff. We've got a Hayes Spirit store now. If you walk into Hayes, that's being run by our special ed kids. They started the project on a cart, selling stuff at lunchtimes and it's evolved now into a whole store that, that our special needs kids are running there at Hayes High School. There's just neat things going on. There's a spirit amongst our staff that, that it's inspiring to watch. It really is a neat thing. It all comes back to, to love for kids. So big rocks for 2019. This is a binding budget year. We all know that Governor Kasich balanced the budget on the back of local governments and school districts like ours, growing school districts like ours. The way that manifested with us is the gain cap. We have about 6,000 kids, we get funded as if we have 4,000 kids. I mean, that's how they do it with us. I know they, they made direct cuts into the local government funds for you guys. This is a binding budget. We think they can make that right. They're around $200 million ahead of projection and that's a $400 million adjustment to their projections to the positive. Their, the economy is driving a budget that would let them fix much of what they've done to schools like ours and the local government fund. We want to make sure that we're a part of that conversation. We've got a coalition of districts like ours that are working hard to really influence that over the course of the next six months as we, as the governor drops his budget at the end of next month, as the House takes their cut on it for several, two or three months, as the Senate gets about two weeks to work on it and the conference committee gets about a day and a half, I mean, the board ends up on the governor's desk. We're going to continue to be really engaged, telling that story about districts like ours that are not funded, the way that, that similar comparison districts are around the state. So that's an important big rock for us. We're going to have two no-new tax levies on the May 2019 ballot. So both, you'll see two issues, neither of which will represent an increase in taxes. The first is a renewal of our permanent improvement levy. That's been in place for about 30 years, the permanent improvement levy. It was first passed at three mils. It's right now being collected at 2.48 mils. We're looking for a straight renewal and we're going to make that just continuing at that 2.48. It'll actually drop down though, it's a fixed rate of mileage, so as valuations go up, the effective mileage rate of that goes down. So a straight renewal of a permanent improvement levy and then a no-new mileage bond. We've seen districts like Dublin do this, Old Tangi do this. In order to do this, you've got to be a district that's grown for about 20 years and we now qualify, you know, as we've been going through that growth that you saw on that chart. And what we're able to do is refinance and reissue some bonds that are already in place from previous construction, extend out those terms and we're able, in this case, borrow $36.5 million without any adjustment in tax rate. What that means is from 1996, when we passed the bond in 96, through now, our projections are at least 2028 and hopefully well beyond that, we'll have been able to do everything we've done facility-wise for the two net mils that we used in 2013. So we've, we've been very strategic in terms of how we've addressed those things. Our treasurer's been masterful on that work and that will be on the May ballot as well. I've just been quite a bit of time talking about what our vision is for that particular issue. So the permanent improvement passed nearly three decades ago, I think I mentioned most of these. We've replaced it twice. When you replace it, it brings it back up to the three-mil mark. We've done that twice over the years because what happens is you collect a set amount and every year you collect the same amount. We use that for buying buses, buying our technology, redoing roofs and those kind of routine maintenance things, textbooks. Well, prices for those rise, but the amount this, this collects, it's the same each year. So twice in the last 30 years, we've replaced it, brought it back to the three-mil levy. That's not really an option anymore. The state took away the homestead exemption, that 12 and a half percent that you see that the state kicks in, that the taxpayer doesn't have to, they took that away for new or replacement levies. So for us to replace this back to three mils would actually cost our taxpayers a substantially larger portion than that because of losing the homestead. So the decision on board was let's make this continuing if in the future we're, we're going to, because of inflation, would need to reapproach our taxpayers, we'll do that as a separate issue. The no-new mileage, Board of Education, I'm sorry, should have placed a $36.5 million bond levy on the May 2019 ballot, results in a zero net increase in tax rates, provides for additions and modifications to our school buildings in their current grade and attendance value configurations. It meets the goal, ensuring that our buildings have sufficient capacity through at least 2027 and we're, we're pretty confident that that'll be beyond that. It includes work with an architectural firm. In fact, we're working with Triad, for those of you who know Zach Price. Triad will be our architect on this project, to really also at the same time, address the fact that our buildings are getting pretty large. I mean, we have buildings at 700, we have one that'll go up to 800, will be one that's in the 600s, we'll have another that's functionally in the 600s. One of the, so we're really looking at how do we restructure those buildings to, to give a smaller school feel. That's true of Schultz, it's true of Dempsey, to a lesser extent at Carlisle and Woodward as well. These are some of the projections that we had from our consultant and you can see that it's pretty well spread out. The Schultz continues going up to 810. It's interesting though, in the last five years of that projection, it only goes up 11 students. So Schultz's growth is coming right now as the rest of those come online, the, the big projects that are out there. And then it stays fairly flat. What we expect to see is Conger really start to accelerate because that Terra Alta that you saw, the ravines of the Old and Tangi and the new apartment complex that's going across from Meyer, what's the name of that?
Seattle House.
Seattle House and then that Phase Two, we kind of have in our, you know, I know they've, this conceptually brought in front of you, that's another 200 and some units, you know, so 400 and some units there. We've got, that's why there's an asterisk next to Conger. This is what our consultant had. She didn't have everything in front of her that has now since come to you in, in what looks to be a relatively short timeline for development. So we think Conger may actually end up as, as high as 600 over the course of that, that time. Woodward, you see, goes up to 730, I have a couple asterisks there. 277 of that 730, actually about 300 now because it's, we're already ahead of projections again. About 300 of those are preschoolers. A, they're really small and B, they only come half-time, so they don't, they don't functionally add 300 amounts. They have about 150 in terms of occupying your building as you go through that. Dempsey starts to become really large, will be one of the larger middle schools in the state. If, if we were going out for 150 million, if we could do that at zero mils. If, if we were going out for 150 million, if we could do that at zero mils, it might change our planning, but to only be able to generate 36 million off of zero net mils, we think we've come up with a pretty good plan in terms of what we're going to do. The, we're going to be on the ballot in May 2019. We'll issue those bonds from May to July 2019, and from May to October, really do our detailed planning and our construction document production, which will allow us to go to bid at that November to 2019, November, December 2019 window, for a spring 2020 construction window. That'll probably go about a year and a half total in terms of that construction window. Much more compressed than what we did with the 2013 bond, which had about a three-year build-out. We're going to try to build all this up in about a year and a half from first turning dirt to when we can get done. Some of the planned improvements and additions made include Carlisle. Carlisle, we're actually in pretty good shape from a capacity perspective because of the last addition. What we're looking for there is a small addition to the front of the building to establish a more secure and controlled entrance into the building. The way Carlisle was built is not a way with the current office to get a secure, what is now expected, which is somebody comes in, has to be fully processed before they can then enter into the instructional space. The way Carlisle is built, you can't do that. We're going to do a small addition on the front that allows us to really get that industry standard from a security perspective. We did some stuff last time that we, what we can afford to do with buzzers and all those kinds of things. Here, we're going to actually be able to do that physical update. That'll open a little bit of space instructional on the inside as we do that. So it'll, it'll act as a net addition of instructional space at Carlisle, but the real focus is going to be security. At Conger, a small addition to account for future enrollment increases expected from the ravines of Owen Tangi, Terra Alta, the apartment complex, Seattle and whatever the next phase is, across from Meyer, those kinds of things. Schultz, an addition to accommodate the projected enrollment increases there. And that's one we've got a lot more, I owe the board a lot more answers in terms of how do we do that at the same time, give us the ability to have a smaller school feel? It's going to be a big enough addition that I think we can do that as we work with our architect. Smith is primarily an improvement in the playground space around that. As we, we took away about half the playground as we did that last addition. We'd like to be able to reestablish that playground space at Smith. Smith is otherwise pretty landlocked right now. There's not a lot going on in that sector in terms of development. So we'll see some net increase in enrollment, but nothing we don't think we can handle, mostly with the structure we have. And then Woodward, really it's an increase in the number of preschool classrooms. We're not sure what Cofflin Crossing will, will yield, if any. We've got that little bit of development on Bell and those areas, but in general, it's going to be a fairly small increase in overall enrollment at Woodward, but our preschool numbers continue to, to expand. And worrisome because we're actually heading out what the 2027 projections were. So we're going to have to relook at those numbers yet again. For Dempsey, we're looking at a renovation or replacement of the tech center as well as the addition of athletic support facilities. Our program has become so strong there. We need some restrooms you can use, use the sports complex, that don't involve you coming back into the building, which is what you have to do right now, just from a security perspective. We're using that thing, you know, almost 24/7 now. So it's timely we do that. We also see it as a chance to either renovate the tech center, you know, the old building that comes off the front, or perhaps replace it completely with a two-story. Some of that just comes down to where bids, where bids come in, if we have enough resources to do that. Just renovating it will add a lot of instructional space. If we actually replace it with a similar addition to what's on the rest of the building, it'll set us up, I think, well between now and 2028. Hayes is going to be fairly small in terms of what we do in that building. We're seeing increases in our enrollment at Hayes, but people will go to high school the same way that they used to go to high school. If you grow up with 100 kids, that's, you know, enrollment-wise, doesn't mean you have 100 more kids there. By the time you have the kids who go to the career center, our kids, I mean, Aaron was just in the past week setting up more opportunities for our kids to be on Columbus State's campus, taking classes down at Columbus State. We have kids who are doing work-study programs, kids who are doing blended online programs, kid, you know, 40 kids are coming over the lill. So we think we've got the classroom space there. We need to, to enhance some of the area. If you've been in the 2000 academic wing, if you know what I mean by that, it's very nostalgic because it feels like 1962, because we haven't done anything since 1962. So we'd love to kind of bring the cabinetry and the finishes in that section up to at least 1985 standards, you know, a little beyond. So we'll do that in the 2000. Well, that's a student seating area at the stadium to get our high school kids away from the real people. Just some other improvements around, to, you know, here and there around the high school. But the real focus in terms of money is going to be at Schultz to deal with that size and that, to get that small school feeling. Conger is going to be a significant one. Dempsey will be significant. Woodward will be significant. A little smaller at Smith, Carlisle, and the high school on this one, but, but something for everyone at the end of this construction project. It'll, it'll, it'll feel another step toward the future, the way that the 2013 really has. You go to our schools now and they don't feel like they felt 10 years ago. I think we'll, we'll see that same thing with what we have going here. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have of me or the board.
I have some questions. So I'll start by saying my kids' intentions. I've said nothing but 100% satisfied, 110% satisfied with the teachers, the principal. We transferred from another school and it's been wonderful. That's the city we are in. I'm concerned about the traffic pattern expanding on in the neighborhood and if we're going to be adding connections to try to disperse some of the traffic around in the neighborhood. And I'm sure you thought the alternative of adding another school, maybe somewhere?
We, the adding of the sixth elementary was something we looked at. The two challenges to that is, that itself was about 20 million, 36. And because our development is kind of split now between the east side and the west side, it meant redistricting all five buildings to bring that sixth one. And we still weren't sure where to put it because what we had in the land was on the east or west side. So that may still be done in the future that we have to do that, but I sense was, let's take Schultz, let's, let's, when we do the addition, whether we do it as a Schultz lower and a Schultz upper, some, we're bringing on an assistant principal this next year to, to bring some more administrative support. Let's do that addition in a way that adds some commons, adds a gym space, to really let us face that school, to get that smaller school feel because it's really big. But you're right, it's also really good. And Tom has already told me informally, because of course there's a process, you're not getting your plan approved unless you have at least one more connection into the neighborhood, most likely from either the south or the west side, to get another flow in for that, for that, that campus. So I think the two concerns you had, one, I think we spent a lot of time talking about, and the other, Tom has informed us, you will fix this before. Informally, of course. He's exactly right. And Jason, who was our facilities director, was well ahead in terms of his planning on that. Thank you.
What about the idling data that reminded you, where parents are getting there 35 minutes early so that they can not be in line?
That's true, by the way, to every elementary school. Yes, yeah, it's pretty, yeah.
I think to Paul's point in terms of your point about the traffic circulation, it's something that I offered the assistants, our technical assistants from our engineering, our traffic engineering, Bill Freen, all his staff, as you start that process, taking a look at connections with cobblestone and connections with firestone. The more you've provided options for parents to get to that school, you will, I think, reduce the amount of flow, the funnel effect that you get now, everybody coming through Applegate in that one direction. So there aren't really two options, and we'd be happy to work with the schools in terms of helping, look at that from an overall traffic and circulation standpoint, so.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
I have a comment. I just, you know, I'm just so amazed, every time I pick up the paper, there's another idea that this school's done, like the cooking idea, like the kids making Valentine boxes for mentally challenged. I was there for them on the house programs at high school. And the other day, my granddaughter, who goes to, she's at Carlisle, had a house shirt on, I'm like, why do you have a house shirt? Because we're doing house stuff at this school. I just think it's wonderful every time I turn around this old lady, so.
Fabulous job.
Thank you.
Just in terms of new money, you don't expect anything to fall for the next, I mean, it's not on wood, and that's a loaded question, but as council takes a look at letting options, obviously 19 is, you, you're on the ballot in May, but one of the options we were looking at perhaps was next, next May, that, you know, the primary in, in 20. We not be, 20.
We're very confident that we're probably three years out from asking for new money, and if the legislature steps up at all, maybe four or five. So that would get us close to that. You know, our goal is to go at least that six years that we went between the last two money levies. If the legislature steps up at all, we will meet that goal. But no, we, we have a renewal that we have to do in the 2020 school year. Renewal of the 2010 levy that was a 10-year levy. But as far as new money, we don't have anything that kind of is coming down the pipe on the five-year forecast to at least 2022, and I'll be shocked if we can't extend that to 2023 or 2024.
Thank you. And now we have a update on Portland Field by Roxanne Amadon.
Yeah.
That's Pia. Okay, so I'm Roxanne Amadon. I live at 161 West Winter Street. And it's important to say.
I'm the president of the Northwest Neighborhood Association and of the Portland Arts Department. So before I get too far, you know, I wanted to welcome all the people who came to support the Portland Arts Department. If I could ask you all to stand. These folks are all volunteers with the exception of one who made the pitch. They all donated their time, their money, their talent, and their thought leadership to get this Portland Park. So thank you all. And what is this, Roger?
Those are stickers, bumper stickers that we had. I found them in my office at Bob's Garage Center. That is a reminder of the school board decision to tear down Borlton School.
Good way to start us off. Well, we're going to say hi to them up here. So the last time we talked about the park, it was 2016. We were talking about opening the run. Willis was no longer going to need the space, the playfield, and we were saying, hey, let's uncover the run and do all kinds of magical things. And we were finishing off. So we backed up and re-grouped and, we were afforded the opportunity to use a portion of the field and turn it into what today we call the Portland Arts Department. It's a demonstration field that let us bring our vision to life. So what have we achieved in this, this 18 months or so? We've added over 50 pieces of art into the field, from knit bomb in the fence to art boards, to sculptures, a known village, and those sails you see as you go up and down William Street that make you turn your head. We held 22 events to engage the community. We thought it was important that they really understand what was back there behind those sails and how they could use it. So we had yoga and painting and cooking and concerts. We had two people out of painting a bit, and we had over 1,300 people come to our antique festival. And with 40 vendors and five food trucks and two performers and thanks to Debbie and her gang for bringing that to life, that's wonderful. And we intend to do it again this year, if we can. We raised over $50,000 in infrastructure and maintenance monies, cash and in-kind donations. And we also received a $2,500 grant from, you have Arts Council, Art Start Grants for our intern Sharon, who's a woman of worth, after her, supplies, educators, and promotion. So, you know, really have done an amazing job. We had a pad and lighting and updated bathrooms, landscaping, cafeteria insurance, and plumbing, fixtures, and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, that money is put to use quite handily. Okay, so that's where we've been. Where do we go next? So 2019, you know, our intention is to take this park to a new level. We want a dynamic entertainment venue that really grows the footprint of the downtown as we cook. So that, because the downtown goes beyond Sandusky Street, it's going to the east side already, right? We're going up Winter Street, developing the east side of town, and the west side of town really could, the, the park could add an important entertainment venue for our space. You know, high tide raises all boats, and we have an opportunity to really kind of grow how we think about our footprint. We want it to be iconic and beautiful, engaging and lively. It's got to fit in the neighborhood, though. It's got to be family-friendly and not be too moisterous because I live right there as many of you all do. It needs to be financially self-sustaining. I know that's an important point that I need to make to all of you. Our intention is to make this a financially self-sustaining program where we raise money to cover the costs of running. We want year-round programming, higher ticket items, bigger events that let us bring in more people to the community, and, and they will invest in our town, too. So the things that are important or that we're thinking about in bringing up life are a performance platform so that we would be able to hold, it would be beautiful, functional art, but it would be able to provide concerts and theaters and have a guy with a banjo to the symphony. We would have, you know, the ability to have picnic with the cops here in Delaware, Ohio, which is our little version of that, anyway. An imagination park, and a northern park adjacent to the neighborhood with seating and water feature and play spaces and, and interactive play and art, and that would be the community gathering space. A four-season building that lets us, lets us use the space 12 months out of the year. Today, we could only really have the events from May 1st until a little bit into October, and then it's cold, it's wet, and even the events that happen throughout that or season are rained out from time to time. So having an indoor space and having a space that we could, we could do more activities in 12 months out of the year would be very helpful for us. We need restrooms, we need kitchens, and that particular space could be rentable and used for other activities like weddings and other events. And our, our event guru back there, Pat Paulstein, she, she's been advising us quite a bit on how we can make that work for us. Parking, of course, is important. We like to have parking along with this alleyway or add to that approach because we know that'll be a concern. Landscaping, evolving, innovative art, and unique programming. We don't want to be a me-too. We don't want to replace things that are already happening in this town. We want to raise the boat, make sure that, that we are building upon those things, or bringing unique programming into the town that you've not seen before here. So we did a survey to 700, the 700 people on our mailing list, and the top vote-getters for things that people wanted to see were concerts, outdoor movies, and festivals. I did yoga, theater, and a couple of other things. But that fits directly into the sweet spot of where we'd like to be with the performance platform and move back into our inside space. We don't want people to go to one of us. We want all those people to come here, spend their money here, stay the night, get our wonderful hotels we're all getting, eat in our restaurants, doing, doing wonderful things here in our town, and this is what we're going to be doing. So how do we think we'll do that? Well, we would like to create a new non-for-profit that is a self-funding entity that is spun off of the NNA. That organization would be responsible for programming, property evolution, and finding the funding for maintenance and improvement. We see the revenue streams will vary depending on how far we get with our improvements, but we see several of them. Large programs, six or more large programs a year, ongoing program that would be smaller, that would bring in little, little activities, but they're spread over 12 months, and you could do a lot more of them. Rentable event space, that would be hopefully beautiful and desirable. We still would pursue donations, sponsorships. We can sponsor a festival or perhaps. We can sponsor a festival or perhaps sponsor an infrastructure piece and grants. So I don't know if you're familiar with the Our Town Grant, but it is $20,000 to $200,000 in matching award, but it does require the city involvement. It does require that you be part of the not-for-profit, not necessarily owning the land, but being the sponsor of that program. And their objective is to strengthen communities, provide opportunities for the arts to be integrated in the fabric of community life. Our imagination park is exactly that. It is where community and creativity meet, and that's our logo and our mission for this park. So what's next? Well, so one of the biggest questions on my mind in this park is land ownership. The school owns it today. It's not something that they want to continue to own in the long run. And so we need to identify how we move this property forward so that we can then identify this management group to launch it, and then to fund the programs we'd like to put into place. So, you know, I guess I open it up to you for comment, questions, and thinking about how we structure the ownership of this property so that we can give ideas for that and how to make progress.
Well, schools is, in essence, where we were 18 months ago. We don't anticipate a future educational need for this site. The smartest thing for us to do would be to get rid of this piece of property. Not needed for future educational needs. It's, you know, just a liability and a maintenance cost to have on the books right now. But we know there's only two ways for a school district to get rid of property. Either A, they do an exchange with another public entity for land and other value. Land and some financial consideration, it can go either way, whether we pay extra or they pay extra, as long as there's an exchange. The other, and the only other way for the school district to get rid of this is to put it into public auction, similar to what we see the county doing with the mole jail. That still would be the reasonable advice to the board is, let's get rid of this piece of property. But with that being said, we're also a part of this community, and we're intrigued by the idea of that art park being a part of this dynamic downtown. And that's why we've, you know, entered in to this relationship over the course of the last couple of years. We'd love to see it go another step along that path sometime soon. I mean, really, the options are to continue what we're doing now with a facility use agreement, which isn't the right ongoing relationship. School districts can lease property. So we could do a lease, even if it's for a very small amount of financial consideration, theoretically to the Northwest Neighborhood Association or the not-for-profit that is the successor in terms of managing this. More traditionally, and I think more acceptable to the board, would be a lease to the state as a possibility. Then obviously, the fourth option is to sell it outright. So that's kind of where we, you know, we haven't changed fundamentally, but we believed in what they're trying to achieve 18 months ago, and we believe in more in terms of what they're trying to achieve with that parcel. And, you know, as I look around, the supporters in here, what we see are some of the, some of my favorite people in Delaware, you know, standing when you have to stand up, because I think there's a shared belief in the future of this town and the future of that parcel.
And my comments have, we've changed neither.
No, I think it's a, it's an exciting vision. I think, given Roxanne's, her organizational success and what you've done thus far, I would imagine that you can continue with fulfilling the vision. I think the challenge, I think, for us in part is taking on the responsibility, forgetting how a transaction might occur between the schools and the city. We now have a piece of property that we, I guess if you agree to maintain it, they've got the infamous Delaware Run that runs through that property, and that was always one of our hesitations about that property, was that particular piece of infrastructure. We've got that to deal with. I guess I would ask, is it, Paul, you had mentioned that the schools could consider a longer-term arrangement with the, with the yet-to-be-established foundation. Is that possible? Is that something, Roxanne, that you and your group would entertain?
Well, it would depend on the terms, but certainly we could entertain it. You know, whether you all, city owns it, and we're leasing it from you, or the school owns it and we're leasing it from you, all the same things still hold true in terms of we need, we need some kind of commitment so that we can develop on that property. We're kind of in an impasse with small-time programming without having the whole infrastructure and the ability to reach out to sponsors and other people and say, hey, I mean, we have people who might just brought people to the table, and hey, we'll build a performance platform for you. But I can't do that unless we have an arrangement that lets us have some continuity with that property. So that's kind of where we are. Have yoga and some small concerts, and we'd like that, but we'd like to go big and go for some big grants and go for some big sponsorship and really make it ours in this town.
I think they're great ideas, I just don't know that we want to. At this time, we not support what you're doing, Paul.
Is that an at this time, or is that an ever? If you don't see it in the future of the park mix ever, that's a different discussion than for us versus how we could use some time to figure this out.
We've talked before, I don't think anybody had much interest in owning it.
I think there's just too much potential liability there with the Delaware Run and...
When you say liability, the cost of daylighting that?
The cost of daylighting or the cost of maintaining it, covered, you know, lighting it, maintaining it. That's just a significant ongoing cause.
Did you get a sense for the cost of daylighting? I know that was something you had...
Yes, we had Offspring, we were a stream look at it in 2016. I think we bumped up the numbers 10 at the time. I think they were suggesting about half a million dollars. And then we bumped that up a little bit because of, you know, I was building, you know, about even the ends and still leave it up and create a, what do you call that? Parkland. So those were the kinds of things. I think it was about right. Does that sound right?
Yep.
I think the timing is really wrong, because we passed our parks levy, all those funds are spoken for, we're kind of right at the tail end of that, and now we have this new park, and so...
How much longer on that park levy before those bumped to about?
Probably 25, 26, depending on tax collections right now. I think it's scheduled pay-down is, I think, perhaps longer than that.
About 2,000. Oh, that long? So another seven years.
Roxanne, I guess it would be helpful to know, what you're proposing is that regardless of the ownership, whether it's the schools through some sort of long-term lease or the city, you're proposing the foundation maintain and fund the park so that we're not out, we're not cutting the grass and doing that, that's all done privately or through this nonprofit?
Yeah, we've talked about it along the way. But boy, I sure would have been nice if you wouldn't just take all that busy work off, but, you know, I think that we have a team of people who are willing to go out there and do the fundraising, to bring the money in, to achieve this case. And, you know, the infrastructure build-out will come at the pace in which we can collect the money. So, you know, we start with maintenance, and we do a little bit, and we do a little bit more, and we do a little bit more, and we've, you know, I think we've proven that we can achieve this case, bring the right people together.
I also mentioned to Roxanne, when we spoke about this last week, that the Trust for Public Land is an organization, a national organization that works with local communities in terms of preservation, funding parks, that type of thing. That might be something that we, that could be explored. They assist communities, foundations, not-for-profits in terms of acquisition and development of parkland. And so that would be something that might be an option for you as you take a look at this.
Okay, let us have, let us discuss it on council, and then we'll get back to you. And we've got a little bit more, looking at this trust for public funds. And I think that very much that will have to be explored out.
Yeah, I'll send you a link.
Well, let's set, let's self-impose a deadline in terms of us having discussion back, because, should we say May?
It's just the same day.
Okay. Because, yeah, we shouldn't continue on in this way for another seven years. That would be, would be the wrong decision for the district and for what our main purpose is.
Yeah, the other cabinet's plan, that everybody knows it's involved with Rock Day House, too. So, you know, this is not something that we can get into in a variety of, be able to, we have to be out of the process, so on. We're looking to establish this not-for-profit so that we can, you know, really have the resources on board more of the time to get this done.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you all for coming and showing your support of this. Other discussions? Anyone else who wants to bring up? There are motions to make there?
Salute.
A motion by Mr. Schaefer.
Certainly welcome.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
May Aragon?
Yes.